I'd like to call this meeting of the Alaramo Community College Board and Trustees to order and welcome everyone that's in attendance here. We appreciate your interest in business that we conduct here and thank you for your presence. We have Dr. Susan Burrow that will be giving our invocation. Dr. Burrow?
Let us pray. We are thankful for this beautiful day and the many opportunities for service. We're most thankful for the blessings of our work. Our mission is vile to the greater good of mankind and to your honorable service. We pray for wisdom and skill to carry out our most important mission with civility. We pray that you will continue to guide us in your work and that we will deliver the leadership, the service, and fulfill the many opportunities to enhance the lives of all whom we touch. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Dr. Burrow. Mary Scott, would you lead us in our pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chairman Secretary, will you call Burrow?
Here.
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 Thank you.
Next item four on the agenda is the approval of today's agenda. All the trustees have received this well in advance of this meeting and had time to review the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
No.
A motion by Mrs. Brown. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Floyd. Any discussion? Any changes to the agenda? There being none, all those in favor of approving the agenda, please raise your hand. Those opposed? The agenda is approved. Next is item five, the minutes of the January 12, 2016 meeting. Once again, we've all had these minutes in our possession for several days and had a chance to review them. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Uh huh.
Motion by Mr. Fantore. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. McAnally. Any discussion on the minutes of the January 12, 2016 meeting? There being none, all those in favor of approving the minutes as presented, please raise your Next would be item six, public comment. Chairman Secretary, we do have individuals signed up with public comment. Are any of those individuals present? Senator Singleton, Representative Ny, Representative Paul.
I'd like to make a motion, maybe we adjust the agenda to move public comment to the agenda just in case they're still at State House and cannot.
There's been a motion to modify the agenda and move item six, public comment, until, say, after item nine, the chancellor's report. Okay? There's been a motion. There's a second. There's a motion by Mr. Davis. There's a second by Mr. Smith. Any discussion from trustees? All those in favor of modifying the agenda and moving public comment until after item nine, please raise your hand. Those opposed? We'll move on. Next is item seven, instructional and student services facilities fiscal information technology, adult education, workforce development. We have items A, one through.
I want to take one and two. That's what I'd like to do, Mr. Chair, is I'd like to take each one of these individually. I know that the board has received a briefing a month or so ago on each of these, but I have asked Dr. Clawver from Calhoun to give you a brief presentation on his plans. Dr. Clawver? This is item seven and one that he'll be addressing. I'm hoping he'll finish.
Good morning, Chancellor, members of the board. In this presidential political season, I'll try and do what one politician wants to say. He never can speak and say too little. So, we were requesting a $750,000 appropriation really from our funds to do some changes within our industrial programs. We had initially with our Toyota FAME program had housed that program under a lease at the Robotics Technology Park with AIDT. There was never, even at the inception of that lease, any attempt that that arrangement would be permanent. And we are now nearing the lease end, and so we're going to have to find FAME another home. And so, we want to bring it back across the street to our Center for Applied Technology and house the FAME program there. And lion's share of the money that's going to be spent in this is really going to be to accommodate some of our lab space and to build a computer lab to accommodate that for the FAME program and kind of go along some of the guidelines that Toyota has for this training program. So, that's probably the biggest piece. But, this, the one thing I will say is that I've found in my year at Calhoun that we had a lot of our technical programs were just kind of placed wherever there might have been square footage. And this gives us a great opportunity to move things around and better align the programs to where we can synergize them and play off the benefits of each of our programs and really benefit students. And so, I'm really excited about that aspect of it. It's probably the most exciting thing about the whole request. We're going to allow us to move our aerospace program to another building, which would give the instructor a dedicated classroom. And we're going to clean out a bunch of junk in that area and kind of fix that up a little bit. Then, by moving that, it allows us to really provide a home for our newest program, which is process control technology, which I believe is going to really make a mark with our industries in North Alabama. And we're actually creating a dual credit certificate for process control technology. And it'll be, if this facility is ready by fall, it's going to be ready for students to come in this fall. And so, we're really kind of excited about that. It also provides us some space for our additive manufacturing program, where a project that I had, or my predecessor had gotten approved before the previous board last year that I had canceled because of expenses, is going to allow us to do that without spending any more money. So, I like that, too. And that's pretty exciting. So, all in all, it's kind of a comprehensive musical chairs. And we believe that it's going to be best for our students, best for the faculty, and best for the college. So, I'm ready to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions for Dr. Clawver?
You mentioned a dual credit program. Is that, will that be moved to your local center?
Yes. I tell you what we're doing. We've created about seven certificates this year to go into, that are really designed specifically for dual credit. Process control technology is one of them. My goal is that a student comes in as a junior, they complete that certificate, at the same time they receive their high school diploma. And that makes them, especially in a program like process control technology, makes them immediately employable in many of our industries in North Alabama.
Does that mean you could go back?
Yes. And so, they, but what will happen is, is they're probably going to need to come back and will get an associate degree. I'm going to take the long bet with those students, that eventually I'm going to get them back and come back and get their full associate degree. But, you know, the demand for workforce in North Alabama is so strong, we need to try and give those students an incentive to make them employ themselves in their high school.
Any other questions for Dr. Clawver?
Good presentation, Doc. I appreciate it very much. With that, I would recommend the approval of seven, eight, item one.
Once again, you have before, you have before is a renovation project for the Center for Applied Technology, Industrial Technology and Aerospace Training Center buildings at John C. Calhoun Community College. Is there a motion to approve this?
No.
Motion by Mr. Davis, a second by Mrs. Brown. Any further discussion? There being none, all those in favor signify by raising your hand. Those opposed?
Item one is for the President. I would then recommend the approval of seven, eight, item two. And item two was discussed at some length during the last board session that we had. But I've asked Dr. Clawver if she would address this board, so she has a presentation that she will bring to you.
We have before us Northwest Shels Community College, a purchase of equipment, computers or computers. Is there a motion to approve item seven, eight, two?
Make a motion to approve item seven, eight, two.
Motion to approve by Mrs. Brown. Is there a second?
No.
Second. And Mr. Clawver, discussion? Any discussion by the trustees? Any questions about this item? Once again, we have before us a purchase of equipment for Northwest Shels Community College. All those in favor signify by saying, by raising your hand, please. Those opposed? Seven, eight, two is approved. Chancellor, there we go.
Now, I'll move on to item A, and I'd like to take each one of these items individually as well, if I might. I would first like to recommend approval of eight, A, item one. Again, we've had a pretty extensive discussion about particular items over that, which we're going to discuss.
Chancellor, if our call on item eight, A, one, there was an environmental issue. I'd ask a question regarding the environmental study that we know that has been conducted.
It has been. It has been after the four K. We have before us a recommendation to approve the purchase of real property at T.A. Lawson State Community College. Is there a motion?
No.
Motion to approve it by Mr. Davis. Is there a second? And second by Mr. Smith. Discussion, further discussion by the trustees? Any questions?
I'd just like to make a statement. A statement in the future would be good. If we have any open items like this for us to have some communication before our board meeting, whether it's under the conditions of approval or not.
Mr. Davis, any further discussion by the trustees? There being none, you have before us a purchase of property, an amount of $12,000, T.A. Lawson State Community College. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Those opposed?
Item eight, A, is approved. Chancellor, I'd like to move on and recommend approval of item eight, eight, two. And this was discussed at some length during the last board session that we had. But I've asked Dr. Clawver if she would address this board, so she has a presentation that she will bring to you.
Mr. Vice President, ladies and gentlemen of the board and Chancellor Hyatt Rick, good morning. And I am happy to have an opportunity to meet with you once again and to share with you our vision for the future of Wallace State Community College and why this purchase is important to our future. And in doing so, I think it's important that perhaps, can you help me with that a bit? I don't have my glasses on, so. Oh, there it is. I think it's important to tell you at first where we've been, so that you can understand as a new board where we are going. I assumed the presidency of Wallace State in 2003. And in the spring of 2003, we're in the 21st century and the college had no computers, no internet, no instructional technology. We had the most severely outdated equipment, not suitable for teaching in the state of the art career tech programs. I think every building on campus leaked, had no signage, no wayfinding. Students didn't know where they were going. Mold, mildew, rotted carpet, undersized HVAC systems, very significant issues from one of the most underfunded colleges in the system, but also one that had the cheapest tuition. So, in this period of time, we set about developing a campus master plan in 2003, and we've updated that every four or five years after that. And you have a copy of our most recent campus master plan before you. And our themed priorities in each of those plans has been to improve the college's image, to make it a more collegiate appearing campus that really served to elevate the aspirations of the students that we serve. I think it's important to help college students feel that they are important, not only to their future, but to our future as well. Significant facility improvement emphasis, signage and wayfinding, open space, recreation, landscaping, and certainly an upgrade of utilities and service systems all throughout campus. So, in 2003 through 2007, you can see that we set about making all of those goals become achievable. We began to focus on campus signage and outdoor lighting. We began improvements in our campus entranceway. We started replacing roofs and installing landscaping. We had a plan to construct a health sciences building and to relocate nursing and English. That was derailed by a hurricane. But, we carried that through. This is not working for some reason. In 2007 and '12, our priorities continued around signage, the construction of a fine and performing arts building, upgrades in our HVAC systems, sewer renovations all over campus. We raised a barn and we raised water testing lab. The barn was known as the Red Barn on campus and housed adult education. Didn't do a whole lot to elevate those students' aspirations. So, we carried that forward in our 2010 through 2015 priorities. And I'm going to just show you some of the results of that in a few minutes. And then, 2014 to 2019 priorities, which is the plan that you have in front of you, certainly again focused on the image, the campus gateway, the north entrance. I'll bring a request to you in the next couple of months for that. We've just finished identifying through the selection process the architect we're going to hire for that. But we have installed a road and we sought approval from DOT, which was declined a couple of times. So, we just hired our own engineer, did our own traffic studies. And we have a light at that north entrance now that makes our work campus safer for our students. I was tired of seeing ambulances come and pick up our students, and the life light was the last straw for me. But those are our priorities for the most current strategic plan. We've completed a number of renovation projects. All of those roofs have been replaced. That doesn't account for the repairs to others, but all of those have been replaced. All of those renovation projects have been completed. And those are not minor. Those are very significant renovation projects. We have completed two new construction projects, the Burrow Center for the Fine and Performing Arts, which is located on College Drive at the main entrance to campus, and the new School of Nursing and Center for Science that some of you have seen. And thanks to you all, we've just completed construction of a new CDL truck driver training lot. So, Wallace State today, we've twice been recognized by the Aspen Institute as one of the top 120 community colleges in the nation. We are technologically advanced with 100% of our classrooms outfitted with smart technology, top 50 associate degree producers in health professions in the nation, twice recognized by Southern Business Development Magazine. And our campus is regularly recognized for its beauty and its appearance by our local Chamber of Commerce. Today, we have an energy efficient HVAC and lighting in most all of our buildings. And I trend utilities usage every month. In the last several months, even since we've brought on a new 138,000 square foot building, and we returned the Bailey Center to use about two years ago after it was undergone a significant renovation, our utility usage today is less than it was before we took that building offline. That means something to us. And sewage all over campus has been improved. The 43 acres that was purchased at the north end of campus to allow us to construct that building has become a main gateway to campus as well. And those red circles indicate where we have had to raise old buildings on campus. We purchased that property for 1.1 million. We raised that barn, and you can see the hay bales don't exist there any longer. This is what the north campus gateway looks like now, after you've allowed us to improve our campus. This is the new intersection at the north end of campus, and you can see that it doesn't have any signage. That's the gateway we improved that we will be bringing to you soon. It's wintertime. You can't see the beauty of the trees, but those are ginkgo trees and very high powerful lights that make our campus safer. We've razed those buildings from the campus interior. That barn was affectionately known as the Old Red Barn, and it housed our adult education program for a long time. And I think that that was not suitable, so it's not on our campus anymore. And the old water testing lab is also gone. The Bevel Allied Health Building had exterior brick issues, and so we had to replace the facade on that building. And we also renovated the interior of it. And that's what it looks like now. It's at the Medical Drive entrance. It's a much more efficient building, and it also has a new roof. That was what we call the Rat left property. That was to the left of the Medical Drive entrance. We purchased that property for 251,000. We couldn't relocate that. It was not worth doing anything with, so we razed that building. And we also moved these two houses that the college had acquired many years ago and had been using them to house some dorm residents. And so, we took those buildings and relocated them to the rear of campus, and that's what they look like now. We've used those for construction education training. This is what the new Medical Drive gateway entrance looks like. More of the same. You can see those fall colors in the background of the landscaped trees that weren't there previously. That's just another shot. And this is the Burrow Center at College Drive, our main entrance to campus. Without the, that's the old sign that existed. And you see there was a little sidewalk that really just didn't do anything. It didn't come out to the highway. So, that's our new signage and new sidewalks, lighting and landscaping that's to the left of the Burrow Center and also to the north of College Drive, to the north side of College Drive. That is College Drive looking south to that entrance. All new sidewalks and lighting and landscaping. That's the new landscaping and lighting and digital signage on the front of campus. More signage, branded campus wayfinding. And this is what we've been trying to do with the inside of our buildings. This is a cosmetology building classroom before. We relocated and gutted an old shop building and installed this, and this is what it looks like after. We really had a desire to make sure that our interiors of our learning environments replicated the real world, what would a spa environment look like for a student. This was the interior of our Bailey Center, where all of our student services exist. We had an opportunity to upgrade that when we had to replace the outside cladding, so we rehabbed the lobby area to make it a one-stop center for our students and more inviting. And that's what the Bailey Center looks like now. We've installed picnic tables all throughout campus, a new disc golf course with help from our local city and raised those funds. The yellow circle there indicates the property that we are proposing to purchase, which is on the south side of College Drive, our main entrance. This is an old image. You can see that the Burrow Center did not exist. You can see what that old sign looked like before we removed it. You can see the red circles represent the houses that were removed. That's another shot of the campus. And that's what it looks like today. You can see the sidewalking all along Highway 31. And so, this is why I think that, I hope that you will support our request to purchase. This is a drawn view of our campus from an aerial standpoint. If you'll bear with me, it's kind of slow. But it gives you a feeling, a sense of what that Highway 31 entrance looks like and how busy that roadway is. This was shot at about four o'clock on a Thursday afternoon after the rain. And you can see what a difference that sidewalking has made. It's a little curvy at the very beginning, because when we installed it, we had to go behind the house that existed. But it's making a difference to the community. We've had a great deal of growth across the street from the campus, lots of new businesses. Lots of new businesses have sprung up there. The part that you're seeing to the left there, that, that building right there in the middle was the first building on Wallace State's campus, 50 years old. That's the math building now, and the next building, that one, is the culinary building. And then immediately north of the culinary building is the old north entrance, which we will be taking that up soon, as soon as we're able to redirect the parking in those buildings. And you can see the new north entrance to give you a perspective where our architect will help us in planning what that gateway will look like, and we'll bring those plans to you very soon, hopefully. This is another view of College Drive, entering College Drive. See the property to the left is what we hope that you will allow us to purchase, and you can see the house that sits right across from one of our major buildings at the main entrance to campus. We entertain a number of guests there every year. It houses the Borough Museum. And the building to your right is the Bevel Health Sciences Center. The two buildings approaching on your left, thank you very much, the first one has just received a new roof. The second one is being stripped now, and it's about to be re-roofed. And then the building to your right is the Bailey Center. All of the sidewalking that you see was installed as part of our campus wayfinding, signage, landscaping plans. Can you go ahead? Okay. And this is a front view of the entrance to College Drive at the Borough Center. That gives you another perspective of what that gateway looks like with the two columns on the right and the one column on the left that we had to receive permission from the city of Hansville to place that column there because obviously property issues in that TBA power line, power pole. That's another view of the south side of College Drive. Just another view. And that's a view from, if you don't mind backing up there for a second. That's the, that, on the left is the drive into the Borough Center. So this is looking south College Drive from the Borough Center Drive. That's a view of the house that exists there now. It's obviously vacant. And that's a view south from College Drive, south to the city of Hansville. That's just another view of Highway 31, and another, and another, just showing the sidewalking on the front of the campus. And then that's an aerial view showing the improvements that we've made thus far. So, I respectfully request your approval of this project. I think for the life of the college, it's important to continue the college's emphasis on enhancing the image as a collegiate institution, protecting the parameters, the borders, if you will, of the college from a business that could locate there and that would not be, it wouldn't contribute in a positive manner to the, to the quality of the campus's appearance. I'd be happy to entertain any questions that you have. Thank you.
I'd certainly recommend the approval of item 8A2. And motion to approve by Mrs. Foye, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Colwell. Any further discussion, trustees, any questions? Once again, we have before, something as well explained, Dr. Karlick's purchase of real property by Wallace State Community College, Hansville. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Those opposed? Item 8A2 is approved.
Very good. Well, I would also recommend approval of item 8A3, but before we vote on that, I'd ask Peter O'Brien to give us, give you an update on this. I think we discussed this also in a previous work session, but there were a few details that we did not have at that time.
Good morning to you all. At our last meeting that the board had requested that we go to the market with respect to this insurance coverage, and we asked our broker to do just that, and they did. 15 insurers were contacted. Of those, many declined to provide a quote indicating they couldn't even get close to the premium that we were presently paying at providing the center coverage. We did, we did obtain two additional quotes, but let me first tell you what we presently have, and that is with RSUI. Our, our coverage with RSUI has a policy limit of $10 million. But in addition to that, we have defense cost coverage. Those defense costs do not count against the policy limit. The retention or deductible amount under our current policy is either $35,000 or $50,000. And the reason for the two amounts is the size of, size of the colleges and their claim system. We have 10 colleges who have the lower retention amount of $35,000 of the, of the $10,000. We received a quote, one of the new quotes we received was from AIG. Their premium amount is, is less by approximately $40,000. However, their retention amount is twice what we have in RSUI. The other quote that we got was from Star Indemnity, and it is substantially less than our present quote. It is approximately $200,000 less than our present quote. However, the retention amount for the employment practices liability coverage is five times the amount than with RSUI, is $250,000. Most of our litigated cases are within the employment practices coverage. So if you want to compare the two, take into consideration the differences between the retention amounts. It would take one case to eat up those savings, and at the end of the day, one college would take the brunt of a potential exposure of $250,000. If you multiplied that, you meant one more claim, then the total exposure to one or two colleges would be $500,000 under, under the Star policy with the $250,000 retention. But with regard to RSUI, the total exposure to those colleges would be just $100,000. So, based on that analysis, we are recommending to the board that RSUI be selected again as the insurer for this particular coverage.
Any questions for Mr. O'Brien? There being none, is there a motion to approve item 8A1, which is the professional legal liability insurance? As motion by Mr. McAnally, second by Mr. Davis. Any further discussion by the trustees? Mr. O'Brien, thanks again for checking around on this question. Did you find out where you are? Did you find out that you've got something really good, or you've got something you can prove? Thank you for doing that exercise. I wouldn't recommend doing it every year, but I think every few years it's always, I think, from a good, just prudent business, just look around and see where you stand. But thank you for doing it, explaining it so clearly. Anything else? If not, all those in favor of item 8A3, please raise your hand. Those opposed? Item's approved.
Moving on to item nine, Chancellor's report, I have asked Susan Price, who has played a key role in the merger process, to brief the board in some detail about this whole process. We have, for a couple of reasons. I think, I think it's important for everyone to realize how complicated, how time-consuming, and how much, how much people power is required to pull this off, and what one misstep could mean to the system, and it is, it is certainly that tricky. And plus, I guess I would say at this point as well, we're, we're getting a lot of comments and outside chatter from people who don't understand the education system, and I think there's a lot of bad information floating around out there about mergers and consolidations, what we're doing and what we're not doing. And so I, I think Susan Price will be able to very concisely address the process and brief you, and certainly answer any questions that you have.
Before, Susan, before you begin, I just, item for information for the gallery. We, the board approved moving public comment to the, to after this report, so we're coming back to public comment. I think the individuals that have signed up are now present, and we'll get to that very shortly as, as we can. So just a matter of information.
Colleagues, I may, I may have to leave a little earlier because our, our board is having a retreat today, so I may have to leave, but I want to, you've obviously done a ton of work, so I'm going to hang out at the Wallace.
Thanks for letting us know.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. As Chancellor Heinrich said, I'd like to provide you an update on consolidations. Unfortunately, my brief will probably not be that brief. It is a fairly detailed and time-consuming process, and as Dr. Heinrich said, we're getting lots of questions, which means you're probably getting lots of questions as well. It's so important for you as board members to have a good working knowledge of what we're doing and what you need to approve, because there are several points along the way where you will have to approve action items to further these efforts. So what we'd like to do then is spend a little bit of time talking about that. I'm not even going to mess with this remote, so Jonathan, you will be my manna today. Thank you so much. So when we talk about the East Alabama regional consolidation, what we're really talking about are three institutions, Chattahoochee Valley, Central Alabama Community College, and Southern Union State Community College. Next slide, please. Combining to form a new regional institution or community college. When we are talking about the east, I'm sorry, when we're talking about the southwest consolidation, we are talking about three community colleges as well. Faulkner State Community College, Alabama Southern Community College, and Jeff Davis Community College combining to form a new regional institution. Next slide, please. Thank you. Next slide. So today's update will cover a number of things. First of all, we probably need to talk a little bit about the terminology that we use. Is it a consolidation or is it a merger? It's important to us to be clear on what it is because there are ramifications down the road. There are some differences between the two, and authorities that will need to make some decisions and approve actions that we do want to be really clear with us about what this is, a merger versus a consolidation. We'll also talk a little bit about what's required and who participates in the process, the roles and responsibilities internally of the colleges and the chancellor's office, dates that you need to keep in mind, and the consolidation timeline, and then where are we now and what's next. I do want to let you know that in advance, you already know that the PowerPoint is relatively long, and it will not contain those short descriptive phrases that you usually see in a PowerPoint, and that's because when you take a look, those longer descriptions will probably be helpful in jogging your memory about what was talked about today as you review the materials. Next slide, please. So terminology, is it a consolidation or a merger? Next slide, please. We look to SACC COC as well as the Alabama Commission on Higher Education when we talk about what it means to be or to consolidate. As defined by SACC, consolidation is really truly just a combination or transfer of assets on at least two institutions, and through that combination, they become one distinctly new institution. Example is when two colleges get together and they consolidate to form a new institution. The two institutions no longer exist once they are consolidated. Typically, you will have a new name for the institution. One executive officer and probably lots of branch or campus offices throughout the service area. Next slide, please. When we talk about merger, what we're talking about is the acquisition of one institution or the transfer of one institution's assets and degree authorizing authority to another institution. That institution that is transferred dissolves, but there is a surviving institution that usually keeps its name. So two differences here. One, combination, brand-new institution. The other one, one institution is really dissolved into another institution, and you have a surviving institution that keeps the name. Next slide, please. In this instance, what we're talking about then is truly a consolidation. We are talking about in both of these efforts, three SACC COC accredited institutions that are combining, that will end up one new institution with a name that will be decided during this process, and it will be a regional institution with several branch campuses. Next slide, please. So who's involved in the consolidation? Next slide, please. Consolidation is a really complex, multifaceted, and multi-layered process, and it involves getting approval from several different entities. As an aside, I know that lots of folks have asked me several times a week at least, "Well, didn't y'all already consolidate? Isn't it done? What's taking so long? I thought you already consolidated." Well, being on my side, knowing what has to come before us, I think, how in the world can you ask that question? We're just at the very beginning of this process. But I was reminded that even I think differently when I read a newspaper article back in January about the merger of Time Warner and Charter. When I read it, and I read about slowdown in the merger process, I thought, wait, wait, wait a minute. I thought I heard about a year ago that Time Warner had merged with Comcast. So what happened? Did a little bit of research, and sure enough, the parties certainly did agree that they wanted to have the merger about a year before. But as you all know with business, mergers take time. There are lots of authorities, lots of legal hoops that you have to jump over, and there are lots of regulations that federal authorities, local authorities, regional authorities have to make sure that you have satisfied and you're not in violation of. So about a year down the line, as it turns out, there were lots of concerns about the, about the, about the merger of the two, the two entities, and as a result, they called it quits. Shortly after that is when Time Warner and Charter announced that they were going to merge, and everyone thought that that was going to move smoothly, and it did for a minute. And then what I read in January was that the FCC is slowing things down a little bit because as one of the entities that they need to satisfy, they had some more questions. So as in the business world and as in the educational business world, consolidations, mergers, take time. There are lots of entities that we have to answer to, and we have to make sure that we cross all of our Ts and dot all of our Is to their satisfaction. The other piece of this is they operate on their own timetable, not ours. So once we begin this process, much of the submission, many of the submission dates are really outside of our own control. So those entities include the Alabama Commission on Higher Education, the Southern Association of Colleges and Schools Commission on Colleges, SACC COC, U.S. Department of Education, and of course, you, the Alabama Community College System Board of Trustees. Next slide, please. Now, in addition to those entities that actually have to provide clear approval, we have stakeholders that we answer to who must be involved who must be involved and participate in this process. And they are really the usual suspects, those students, the employees of the institutions, they are the members of the community that will be affected, business and industry, as well as some other entities that I'll talk about a little bit more down the line. Next slide, please. So with respect to the Alabama Commission on Higher Education, or AIC, several years ago, working with the State Board of Education, AIC developed some guidelines for mergers and consolidations and put it inside of an Administrative Code of Alabama. The guidelines also include a resolution by the State Board of Education. Some of the things that it did, of course, was to define what it meant by consolidation and merger and require that our process also be consistent with what is required by SACC OC. What is key to know about AIC is that the commission meets four times a year. So our submissions for anything that they have to approve have to be made in accordance with published guidelines and deadlines. Next slide, please. AIC breaks consolidations into two, a two-phase process. Phase one includes a statement of intent to consolidate. Now that is submitted by the Chancellor to the Executive Director of AIC, but it is prepared by our colleges. And in the guidelines are a whole list of things that we have to satisfy and respond to. I'm not going to go through this list. I'm going to hit some of the highlights. You can certainly take a look at it later date. But what I would like for you to understand is that it's a pretty comprehensive list that inquires a whole lot of thought, a whole lot of preparation by the college employees. Obviously, a description of the institutions to be consolidated, assurances regarding the status, the rights, the privileges, and the benefits of employees who are being consolidated, as well as our students. A description of the benefits generally that are being derived from a consolidation in terms of efficiency of management, leadership, those kinds of things. Next slide, please. Also, we must have, I'll let them get to it. Next slide. Thank you. We have to make assurances in that document that personnel at the institution have been directly involved in the preparation of the statement of intent and that they will continue to be involved throughout the process. There are lots of ways for them to be involved, but that is absolutely critical. And when you think about it, it makes so much sense. Employees of the institutions are the ones who are most knowledgeable about their particular area. Consolidation covers the entire institution. So it's important that they be allowed an opportunity to provide input, and they actually serve on specific committees. And that is employees from each of the institution serve on specific committees so that they can help determine the future of the institution. There must be a plan to maintain appropriate accreditation for the new regional institution. In this instance, our accreditation is through SACC OC. We have to articulate a plan that ensures that the new institution will continue, will be a member of SACC OC. Next slide, please. A description of the impact of the consolidation upon the ability of that new institution to provide training for business and industry, absolutely key. A description of the new regions, new regional institution's ability to provide community service and continuing education opportunities to the residents of the service area, absolutely key. Next slide, please. It needs to contain a description or a projection of the student population, description of what kind of facilities will be available, how we're going to dispose of equipment and supplies, how they will be used with the new regional institution. A description of the financial support available for the new college and a copy of the most recent financial audits of each institution and a financial impact statement regarding the consolidation. Next slide, please. So as you can see, it's a pretty comprehensive list of things that we have to provide. And what you have in your materials for some light reading at some point over the next couple of weeks is actually a copy of the statement of intent. They average around 200 to 300 pages. They represent a considerable effort, the employees of the institutions, to make sure that they've crossed every T, they've dotted every I, and that the new institution will be up and running timely and in accordance with SACC OC and other regulatory agencies' standards. The second phase with respect to the Alabama Commission on Higher Education is divided into two parts. One is an administrative consolidation, and the other one is an institutional programmatic consolidation. Next slide, please. Administrative consolidation really is an animal that has been created by AIC. And our request to them is really so that we can have two or more institutions that are placed under a single executive head, one president, but two very separate institutions. And that's just a step that they consider on the way to full consolidation. So you'll still have two separate institutions operating separately with one president. Formal request for approval of, of a request for approval of administrative consolidation is submitted by the Chancellor on behalf of the colleges. We are not at the point yet where we need to discuss in more detail the administrative consolidation request. So I do want to let you know that in the spring, we'll provide you with a more detailed update on that. Next slide, please. The second part of phase two involves the institutional or programmatic consolidation. And that's where you're actually doing the consolidation of the institution. First, you had one, excuse me, one president or executive over distinctly different units. Now we're combining the units. A separate request to AIC by the Chancellor on behalf of the institutions. Now, as it turns out, what we're going to do is we're going to submit both of those requests at the same time so that the consolidation occurs seamlessly. I'm not going to spend a whole lot of time on that because now is not the time. But I do want to promise you I'll be back in the spring. And we'll talk in a little bit more detail about that request for institutional or programmatic consolidation. Next slide, please. Moving on to SACC OC, I think you all remember that very thorough update that you had from Dr. Bell Wheeling last fall. So I'm not going to go into significant detail. But as you might recall, SACC OC is the recognized regional accrediting body for the 11 southern states. And you can read at your leisure the mission of SACC. Next slide, please. So a significant modification or expansion in the nature or scope of a SACC OC institution is something called a substantive change. The initiation of a merger or consolidation with another institution is a type of substantive change. So in both of these cases here, we're following SACC OC policies and procedures for SACC OC accredited institutions who are seeking to consolidate. Why is that so important? Next slide, please. What about Reed? As we began this journey back in December, you recall that you approved a resolution that included Reed as part of discussions regarding consolidation in the Southwest. Reed is actually accredited not by SACC OC but by the Council on Occupational Education, which is focused primarily on those institutions that do focus on career and technical education. So consolidation of a non-SACC OC accredited institution with a SACC OC accredited institution is even more complex and a longer process. When we met with SACC officials back in January, they told us that it could extend this entire process by another year or even more. Because what will be important to them in their review is that a non-SACC accredited institution must be ready and prepared to become a part of SACC. So it's almost like a new accredited process. Their recommendation to us was to proceed really in two steps. The first one is to concentrate on the three SACC OC institutions. Once they are consolidated, then come forward with a plan for absorbing Reed into the newly consolidated institution. So again, Reed's not forgotten. But now is not the time, really because the fact that they are part of a different or they're a member of a different accrediting body really does complicate things significantly. Any questions about that? I know there have been lots of questions out there about Reed. But that's the reason we're not talking about it right now. Next slide, please. So the presidents of each institution must provide written notification of the substantive change to SACC OC six months in advance of the intended date of review by the Board of Trustees. The Board of Trustees at SACC meet twice a year, June and December. So the prospectus that we have to turn in to them for substantive change has to be submitted either by April 8, and that's in advance of the June meeting, or by September 15, which is in advance of the December meeting. Our plan is to submit by April 8, in advance of the June meeting. Next slide, please. So what does a prospectus have to contain? There's a whole list. And I won't go into detail about that, but I will hit some of the highlights there. Obviously, it has to describe how the new institution plans to continue to meet the principles of accreditation while implementing the change. Again, these institutions are members of SACC. The principles of accreditation is really the bible for SACC. It describes the core requirements as well as the comprehensive standards that our colleges or SACC accredited colleges must meet and continue to meet in order to remain members of its standing. An abstract or background information and description of the change. And it has to contain a faculty roster for each program that provides credentials as well as experience for each faculty member in that program. As you can imagine, it's a pretty big effort. Next slide, please. Similarly to AIC, it's got to describe in some detail the physical facilities and equipment that will be utilized to support the new institution. It will have to list the branch campuses and off-campus instructional sites. And it will need to describe in great detail the student support services, programs, and activities of the new regional institution. Next slide, please. The prospectus also needs to complain, needs to contain a detailed business plan, which describes the financial resources available to support the consolidation, including a budget for the first year, describing the operations, the management, and physical resources available for the change, and the amount of resources going to institutions or organizational, organizations for contractual or support services. And then there's a catch-all, any other necessary information to help SACC understand this consolidation effort. Next slide, please. I would be remiss if I did not let you know what happens if we don't follow the rules. Failure to comply with SACC OC's principles of accreditation could result in an institution being placed on sanction or even being removed from membership. SACC accredited institution whose proposal is not approved by the SACC Board of Trustees will have to maintain separately accredited status with the commission. If the institution continues with the change, even after it's denied, it could be placed on sanction and removed from membership. Next slide, please. And here's the kicker. If an institution fails to follow the SACC OC substantive change policies and procedures, it could lose title for funding or be required by the U.S. Department of Education to reimburse money received by the institution related to the substantive change. We'll talk a little bit more about that in just a second. Next slide, please. Now, we expect everything to go smoothly here. So upon acceptance of the prospectus by the SACC OC Board of Trustees in June, they will approve the consolidation as specified in the prospectus. And the effective date will be the date that we told them in the prospectus. We haven't told them yet, we haven't submitted, but that date is July 1. That effective date cannot exceed 30 days after the approval by the Board of Trustees, the SACC OC Board of Trustees. Now, even after that approval of the prospectus, there's still a lot of work to be done on consolidation. A site visit by SACC OC Substantive Change Committee is required. It will occur in the fall of 2016. There may be some recommendations that come out of that visit to which the newly formed institution will need to respond. That will all be compiled in a report that will go to the Board of Trustees. And in 2017, when they meet in June, they will look at that report. And if everything seems satisfactory, then they will continue this new institution into accreditation. If it's not satisfactory, they have a whole host of sanctions or warnings or other things that they can do. And of course, they can simply not accept. Next slide, please. Now, U.S. Department of Education, lots of different goals, lots of different responsibilities. But the most important for this particular piece is that they establish the policies on financial, I'm sorry, on federal financial aid for education. And they distribute those policies and monitor those funds. Next slide, please. An eligible institution may participate in Title IV only if the institution enters into a written program participation agreement, or PPA, with the U.S. Department of Ed. And what a PPA is, is simply an agreement between the department and the institution for eligibility for Title, yes, Title IV programs. That means financial aid, that means Pell Grants, that means federal direct loans. I know the presidents here could easily tell you the percentage of their students, their enrolled students that receive some type of federal financial aid. I don't know the number for the institutions right off the hand, but I can tell you overall with the system, it's greater than 60%. So it's a significant number of our students receive some type of federal financial aid. Next slide, please. So currently, our three institutions in each effort have PPAs with the U.S. Department of Ed. When they are consolidated, that new institution will have to have a new identifier called an OPEID. And that new institution will need to execute a new PPA with the U.S. Department of Education because the existing PPAs for the three institutions will be extinguished upon consolidation. So it's absolutely critical that timing is just right so that there is no interruption with the PPAs and students will continue to be entitled to federal financial aid. Next slide, please. Consolidation is a type of substantive change that requires that written approval from the U.S. Department of Ed and approval from the authorizing, I'm sorry, from the accrediting agency and the state authorizing authority. We've just talked about that. If a college loses its primary accreditation, it's ineligible to participate in federal student aid programs. And it has to notify the Department of Education within 10 days of the loss of accreditation. That is why this is all so important and it's so critical that we make sure every step of the way, we're crossing our Ts, we're dotting our Is, and we're keeping our agencies and other entities informed of the consolidation. Next slide, please. You, as the Alabama Community College System Board of Trustees, of course, as our governing board, and you have to approve the mergers and consolidations. Not just that, you've got to approve the major steps along the way in consolidation, in the consolidation process. What you need to know about SACC OC's Board of Trustees approval in June of the consolidation is that within 30 days, we will come to you to ask you to approve the consolidation so that three institutions can then start officially be acting as one. Next slide, please. We mentioned stakeholders. I won't go into great detail about that, but I do want to impress upon you how important it is to keep your stake, for the colleges to keep their stakeholders informed and participating in the process. Students have to be informed of the changes that are going to be taking place. They have to be given that seamless transition from the old institution to the new regional institution. They've got to be insured of uninterrupted access to federal student aid. Employees have to be given an opportunity to participate in the consolidation process. And it happens several different ways, through appointment on various consolidation committees as required in the statement of intent and the prospectus. But they can also offer input at employee meetings or through other means. But they can also offer input at employee meetings or through other means that are identified by the college president. Next slide, please. Members of the community must be provided an opportunity to offer input, and that is ongoing throughout the consolidation process. Business and industry partners, of course, need to be kept informed of the status of the communication, because they have a great state investment interest in it as well. There are some other entities that don't approve of the consolidation, but they are important nonetheless. Of course, the Department of Veterans Affairs, the Alabama Department of Rehab Services, other federal agencies that might be involved in grants to our in colleges, they have to be kept apprised of what's happening periodically. Next slide, please. So, I told you, but I'm gonna tell you again. Let's recap. Several steps in the consolidation process. Requiring the colleges to submit detailed documentation and requiring approval from various state, regional, and federal entities. ACH, colleges have to submit following documentation, Statement of Intent, Request for Administrative Consolidation, Request for Institutional Programmatic Consolidation. ACH meets four times a year. Next slide, please. SACC-OC. Colleges have to submit a detailed prospectus describing the substantive change. The Board of Trustees for SACC-OC meets twice a year. We plan to submit that prospectus April 8th, in advance of the June meeting. After SACC's Board of Trustees, SACC-OC's Board of Trustees accept the prospectus, still lots of work to be done. Next slide, please. Approval of continued accreditation with, of the new regional institution is expected in 2017, following the review of the report from the visiting, of the site visit committee, as well as the institution's response. Failure to follow the policy and the procedures may result in sanctions, may result in the loss of accreditation. Next slide, please. U.S. Department of Ed has to be informed, notified of the substantive change, that is consolidation, and I can tell you that they are already aware of what we are doing. The new regional institution will be assigned a new identifier. The PPA will have to be executed between representatives of the new institution and the Secretary of the Department of Education. Loss of accreditation renders the college ineligible for the PPA and for access to those federal funds. Colleges and the office here will continue to work closely with the U.S. Department of Ed to make sure there is no interruption. In fact, I think I just got a meeting request for a meeting maybe later this week with representatives from the U.S. Department of Ed. Again, that's part of the continual communication to make sure we are not dropping any balls and things run smoothly. Next slide, please. And you, as Board of Trustee members. We will ask you to approve that Statement of Intent, the Request for Administrative Consolidation, as well as the Institutional Programmatic Consolidation Request, and we will ask you in July to consolidate the institutions. Next slide, please. Stakeholders' input, absolutely critical. I'm not gonna cover that in detail. Next slide, please. Next slide. So, just a few minutes on the roles and responsibilities of the colleges and our system office. Next slide, please. The colleges are the ones that are accredited by SACC-OC. They're the ones with the formal relationship with the U.S. Department of Ed. The college personnel work directly with SACC-OC and with the U.S. Department of Ed. Colleges work together, they prepare the documentation that is required by the U.S. Department of Ed and SACC-OC, and they submit that documentation. The colleges work together, and they submit the required documentation for ACH to the chancellor's office, and the chancellor then transmits that to ACH. Next slides, please. Here in the office, we provide guidance and assistance to our colleges. We submit the documentation directly to ACH. We participate in those discussions with SACC-OC and the U.S. Department of Ed, but the real communication is really between those colleges and those two entities. We designate the lead institution of each consolidation. In this case, it's Faulkner, and it is Central Alabama. We designate the lead presidents of each consolidation, and that's President Branch and President Burr. And we, of course, will coordinate the responses to inquiries that come from the governor's office, legislature, or other entities regarding consolidation. Next slide, please. Dates to remember. Statement of intent to consolidate, due January 15th. For the March meeting of ACH, we have submitted it. Request for administrative consolidation, due April 8th for the June 10th meeting. We actually submitted it as a placeholder on January 15th. Request for institutional programmatic consolidation, due April 8th for the June 10th meeting. We have not submitted. For SACC-OC, the prospectus is due April 8th, in advance of the June meeting. Date, uh, next slide, please. For the Department of Ed, of course, formally, we have to notify them within 10 days of the change in status of colleges, but we are in continuous contact with them. And for you, the Board of Trustees, the March 8th meeting, we will ask you to decide on that Statement of Intent, which is in your materials. The June 8th meeting, we will ask you to decide on the administrative consolidation request, as well as institutional programmatic consolidation. And at your July 13th meeting, we will ask you for a decision on each consolidation. Next slide, please. In your package, you will see a consolidation schedule. I'm not gonna go through that, because in many ways, I already have, but what you need to know is green means go. We've already submitted or completed those items. We are now, next slide, please, thank you. No, no, go back. You're a little bit ahead of me. We are at February 2016, and as you see, we need to submit the Statement of Intent to you. That is in your materials, that's placed at your, your, um, your seats, and we continue our discussions with the U.S. Department of Ed. This consolidation schedule moves throughout 2016, with notification to SACC submitting the prospectus, response from SACC. Next slide, please. On through 2016, where even after approval from SACC, there is a lot of SACC-OC, there is a lot of work to be done. Schedule continues through, next slide, please, as you will see, July of 2017, where we will have our first-year progress report that we will submit to you. Next slide, please. And then, in 2018 and 19, in those years, we will submit progress reports to you. Next slide, please. Okay, so where are we right now? And what happens next? Next slide, please. Oh, now I'm ahead of you. Thank you. So, completed. Back in November, you approved the board policy that allows the fall to the rolling on consolidations. You approved resolutions that allow the discussions to take place regarding the feasibility of consolidations. We have sent our notice letters to SACC-OC and ACH. We've had our meeting with SACC-OC, and we have, and are continuing to have discussions with ACH, as well as the U.S. Department of Education. Next slide, please. We are continuing with the consolidation committees. Those committees will be continuing to work through the consolidation process, as will community meetings. We have submitted to you the Statement of Intent to consolidate. We've also submitted that to ACH, and we have submitted to ACH as a placeholder the Request for Administrative Consolidation. That document will actually come to you formally as a request in April, but we have put it in your, your materials for review. Next slide, please. What happens next? A decision on the Statement of Intent in March. Your decision on the Statement of Intent also in March. Notice of that decision to SACC-OC, and continued discussions with U.S. Department of Ed, leading up to the prospectus by April 8th. Next slide, please. Future updates for us will be in April. We'll brief you on where we are with the prospectus. Hopefully, the briefing will say we have completed it, and we have turned it in, and here's what it looks like. In May, we will brief you on the two approvals. In June, we will notify you of the outcome from that meeting of the Board of Trustees at SACC-OC, and in July, we will request that you approve the consolidation. Next slide, please. You have notebooks in front of you, and they contain the completed documents that I've described this morning, as well as reference materials that might help you in your reading. And we hole punched your PowerPoint, so that you can also include those in your notebooks. Thank you so much. That's a lot of material in a short period of time, I know. Hopefully, it gives you a pretty good flavor of what's happened so far, what's coming up. As you review those materials, if you have any questions, please don't hesitate to contact us. We're excited about this, but it's a lot of work that we need to do in a short period of time. The colleges should be applauded, or it'd be amazing work that they need to do. That concludes my presentation.
Any questions?
Yes, oh, true. Um, clarification's on our part. With respect to the consolidation, a new institution by SACC-OC, that is their policy, their definition, you, you, I think you said, I'm just confirming.
Yes, we are actually following both SACC and ACH, and they are substantially the same.
And then, one, I think it seems ACH goes one step further and says that a new name would be required by definition.
SACC also expects that we would be having a new name for the institution. I did not put it in the materials, and we've certainly built in that opportunity to have a new name.
With respect to accreditation?
Yes.
Understanding that each college now has the relationship directed with SACC-OC, and central office assists, um, when we get the colleges that are being consolidated, how does the accreditation work then? Does each college, again, have to have the relationship, or each campus, is it the committee, the lead, how, how is that?
Once the consolidation is approved, those colleges disappear, and we're talking about one college that holds one membership in SACC-OC. That membership will include the branch campuses that have now been created. So, for instance, and this is just a for instance, we have Alabama Southern, we have Jefferson Davis, and we have Faulkner. We've identified in the Statement of Intent that Faulkner will be, I'm sorry, that Baymanet will be the main campus. We would expect, then, that the Monroeville campus at Alabama Southern will become a campus that is covered under the accreditation of the new regional institution.
So, consolidated, and then, you said accreditation afterward, or anything, the schedule comes up?
The consolidate, the initial approval, which is in June of this year, will allow for that accreditation. Then, we will have a site visit by the Substantive Change Committee in, in the fall, and that committee will ask lots of questions. They will ask how this consolidation came about. They will talk to employees and ask about their participation and involvement in discussions. They will ask about how things are moving along, because it will be a couple of months down the line after you all approve the consolidation. They will write some recommendations. That new institution will respond. In June of next year, the Board of Trustees will review that report, and if everything looks good, then that new institution will be continued in accreditation. Now, ultimately, down the line, the schedule for reaffirmation may change, because we've got a new institution, and SACC will decide, SACC-OC will decide that.
Do they take into consideration, say, Alabama Southern, for, with just, with their SACC knowledge, they had no bias, and that helps, or?
It will be of great assistance. In fact, all three institutions in the Southwest have recently undergone reaffirmation and have done very well, and that's one of the reasons why SACC also recommended that we hold for a minute on REED, because they expect this to actually go through pretty, pretty smoothly, because they were recently reaffirmed. Adding another institution that is not a member in the process really would extend the whole process even more.
I would thank you for the very thorough, informative presentation. And I've received a lot of letters, and most people are in favor of the consolidation. I've received very good comments. One item that everyone was concerned with was the history and the name, so I don't know if the campuses can retain the name. Is there, is that a possibility?
I think that's on the table. The presidents have created a naming committee, and it is comprised of members from each of the institutions, and I think all of that will be discussed. I've heard lots of possibilities where you might, for instance, have one big name, and then it's at such-and-such campus. For instance, I'm just making this up, please don't hold me to it. But you could have the Southwest Community, Alabama Community College at Baymanet, or at Monroeville, or at Alabama Southern slash Monroeville. So, it's, it's all on the table, and the important piece here is that the employees and the administrators that are assigned to those committees really will thrash this around quite a bit. This is probably the thing that gives people the biggest heartburn. You know, what are we gonna be called, and will we lose our identity? And we need to make sure that we've remained intact, even though we are now part of this bigger regional institution. That's all gonna be on the table, and I think they will do a good job in that. Thank you very much.
Do we have anything, or answer to that? Any other questions for the board members about Dr. Johnson's presentation, excellent on last night? Very thorough, and you covered a lot of material, precise and brief, and I appreciate that. There ain't nothing else on this. We're gonna, we're gonna go back to the public comment portion of our agenda, as approved by the Board of Trustees, and move it to the end of the meeting. We have three individuals signed up to speak. Is that correct, Mr. Sherwood? And in just a moment, as I call the names of those that are present to speak, I'll just ask that you go to the lectern and go ahead, and you have, based on our bylaws, three minutes to make your comments to the board. I, I would just go over a couple of items, just for clarification, especially for the Board of Trustees. Comments should be addressed to the board and shall not include any personal or other comments addressed to any particular member of the board. There should be no debate and no action taken by the board during this portion of the meeting. So, that's mainly for the clarification trustees. And I think the spirit of this board is that we welcome everyone that has something to contribute, and it's something that we need to hear, and I thank those individuals, and anyone in the future that wants to sign up for public comment. Senator Bobby Singleton, not speaking, Representative John Nye.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the opportunity to have to speak to you this morning. Also have, we represent Laura Hall from the Legislative Black Caucus. Senator Singleton was unable to be here because of a committee meeting, but we come as representatives of the Legislative Black Caucus in terms of the consolidations and our mergers that are proposed, and we come basically, if not in an adversarial position, but to find out and to be knowledgeable, so that we can talk and communicate with our constituents as it relates to what's taking place. We're very concerned about education in this state, and we're very concerned about what's taking place with the two-year system. I want to congratulate each of you for being appointed to represent the two-year system. I think you have also responsibility, and you also have a number of challenges that we face in this state as we try to improve education. As stakeholders and as representatives in this state, we would like to be informed in terms of the things that are taking place across the state as it relates in particular to our HBCUs. We certainly don't want them threatened in terms of consolidations, or mergers, or things of that nature, but more importantly, we want to be involved in the process. I don't know how long this has been going on, but there's been much talk throughout the community. It disturbs us to be able to go to statewide meetings, and we hear from economic development consultants and people of that nature, what's taking place in the two-year system, and when we talk to the two-year system, it's totally different. So, there is a disconnect somewhere in terms of exactly what's the purpose, what's the goals and objectives, and what we're trying to do as it relates to consolidations, mergers, et cetera. We're particularly concerned about workforce development. We think that is a big issue in this state. We think the two-year system should be much more involved, if they are not involved at the present time than they presently are. We think it should be driven by the two-year system, because as you look at the laws across the state as it relates to workforce. the state as it relates to workforce development, it can be very beneficial for the things that the two-year system is here and designed to do. And I think that you have the people within the system to work with the economic development people, to work with all of the statewide entities, and make certain that we maximize the amount that we get out of workforce development from the federal government, but we also work with the business community to make sure that we're serving them. So these are the type of things that we are interested in. We'd like to be partners in terms of what you're trying to do, and we want to make certain that it's done in a fair and equitable fashion, that no individual, universities, or schools are particularly picked on, or anything of that nature. And the other thing is to make certain that whatever processes and procedures that we have, that they are followed in terms of policies, so that everybody will know that it's being done, it's been done, been done in a fair manner. Those are the things that we are concerned about. As I said, it's not adversarial, but it's a matter of knowing what's taking place. And as we talk across the state, and many people in the two-year system are not aware of some of the things we heard here this morning in terms of consolidations, VSE mergers, those types of things, it's gonna be surprising to some of the people that are still asking questions because you're getting reports from other entities, where you're gonna have so many regions across the state, and this is the way the two-year system is going to be organized. And none of us involved in the process know it. So that's the main thing that we want to come to you, so we would like to be involved, to be informed. We're not trying to make decisions, but we would like to have the input so that everybody's view can be heard in terms of the process. That's basically what we wanted to say, and I thank you for the opportunity. I hate that I didn't get a chance the last time when it was put on the agenda, but I understand, and I accept that, but thanks for giving the opportunity today to be here and make this presentation.
Thank you for this time. I'll apologize to you again for being unable to recognize you at the November meeting, but thank you for being here today.
I will say this, we have had a chance since that meeting to meet with the chancellor. We have a better understanding. I think he could explain to you some of the things that we have a concern about, and I certainly hope that you'll take that into consideration.
Representative Hall, would you?
So, good morning. I think it's still morning. I want to thank you for the opportunity, Mr. Chair and members of the board, and to say one thing that I have learned today just from the presentation about the mergers or consolidation. That information is very good, and if you would provide that for those of us that are members of the caucus and those of us that are a member of the legislature so that we can make sure we are sharing that information. I'll just speak from the area that I come from. That rumor's been floating around in Huntsville about the merger of Calhoun and Drake, and so, and that causes a lot of concern. And so as we talk about these mergers and what's going on, and if there is any issue that goes on at the school, right away, that flag goes up even higher. So, we ask you to make sure that you involve us, give us information. We're not, I certainly am not asking to take your role over as a board member, but to be informed well enough to be able to speak to the individuals that I represent and hopefully calm some of the fears or some of the concerns that they have. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you again for your comments, and the board will take those apart, and we appreciate it very much. Is there anything any of the board members have to say at this time? Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Chancellor, I would like for you to consider working with removing the district lines or, what the word is properly called, artificial lines for school coverages. I think at the point in calling Alabama, we have five schools up there, but they're district lines, and I would love to take them up to Eraser and give them those lines so businesses, employees can go to the school, they feel like they're servicing better, and that's the way all of the state. I would love to either start the process and, you know, agree to educate the other board members on the district line and the possibility of removing.
We will certainly do that, and since we need to follow six, we will part in the process. Thank you for that. Once again, I'd like to welcome Kristin DeProwl from Governor's Office for being here. We appreciate your involvement. Kristin, stand up. I didn't ask you to stand, I want everybody to know who you are, and we appreciate your involvement with the Board of Trustees, and especially appreciate the leadership from Governor Bentley and from Governor Bentley's office. Thank you again for being here. Appreciate working with you.
Just a couple of other comments if I could. First, we have a number of new members of the system staff that I'd like to briefly introduce. Diane Williams, you're not here. She's Administrative Assistant in Fiscal. Danielle Smith, Danielle, she's Administrative Assistant in Adult Education and Workforce. And Corey Rambo. Corey is Assistant Director for Fiscal Services. He was introduced, but I think we had you in training when we introduced you last time. So, welcome to, welcome to all three of those. And one final, what I'd like to, I would just really like to express my appreciation for your kindness during the recent death of my mother, the cards, the letters, and so on, just mean an awful lot, I think, as those of you who have gone through that. Mothers and fathers are not supposed to die. That's not something they're supposed to do, and it's just very difficult regardless of their, their stage of life. So please know that I'm very grateful for, for your expressions.
We're reconvening for a work session in the President's Conference Room at 1:00 PM, and our next regular board meeting will be March 8th in here in the same location. If there's nothing else that's come before the Board of Trustees, I'm gonna take a motion to adjourn. Motions are second. Always a favor, raise your hand. O's, we stand adjourned.